Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this Planning and Zoning Meeting to Order. Today's date is December first, time is approximately 6:00 P.M. And the first order item of business is the approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimous. And please rise if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we get started, I just wanted to recognize our new attorney, Ms. Nicole. New face here for us. She is going to be our in-house counsel moving forward. She is technically attached to Folds and Walker, but she will be here with us 24/7, seven days a week, even on holidays and Sundays, right?
You've got a fine print, right?
Welcome aboard, Nicole. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And so item number one is the consent agenda, which really just consists of the last board meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Second.
Motion has been moved and properly seconded. There's no discussion on consent agenda. All of those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimous on that item as well. All right, Madam Attorney, you're on deck here in just a second. So the first item under Public Hearing and Ordinance is is the first reading of ordinance 2025-74. Ms. Attorney, will you please read the ordinance into the record if you're ready?
Will do. It is an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending the text of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations as amended, amending Appendix B, Article 4, Section 4.2, .4.2, regulating accessory dwelling units as defined herein, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hectis, you have the floor to take us through this.
Thank you. Let me make sure this is on. Yep, awesome. Good evening. Welcome, Ms. Shally, Mrs. Shally. We have an item this evening, ordinance 2025-74, LDR 2535. This is revisions to Section 4.2, .4.2 of our accessory dwelling unit code. The recommendation this evening is the Planning and Zoning Board can approve the changes, deny the changes, table or continue the item as proposed. So I'm not sure if you all were here in 2018 or who was here in 2018, but we'll take you back. So accessory dwelling units are additional dwellings on the same parcel as a primary dwelling. In the legislative session of 2017, 2018 roughly, the state granted local governments the permission to allow ADUs without being penalized for going against the density they established in their local comprehensive plans. For example, one dwelling unit per five acres would now be two dwelling units per five acres. This is, this in essence doubles the density on these parcels and would require a comprehensive plan amendment. This allowance from the state to assist in the housing crisis granted the municipalities permission to adopt an ADU ordinance. In 2018, that's exactly what the City Commission did, passed ordinance 2018-01 to replace, to place regulations in our code to allow for these accessory dwelling units. Allowable zoning districts for these ADUs is agriculture RSF, which is residential single-family, RSFMH, residential single-family mobile home, RMH, PRRD, MU, PRD and PD. And these are treated as additional homes when it comes to taxes, impact fees and assessments. Some people don't realize that when they go and get these ADUs on their property and then they get their tax bill and don't realize, whoa, I get assessed. And all this comes to, it's a second dwelling. How did we get here? So we just had Annexation 39, as you, number 39, as you remember, and a couple of the folks in Annexation 39 had some issues when they wanted to annex in. One of them got removed because our provisions for the accessory dwelling unit is less than Alachua County. So after taking a look at the regulations and working forward, we took a look at Alachua County's regulations and actually now we are going to be mimicking them. And that is, which I'll show you what those changes will be. This is, a few things came from that examination also. Larger lots that share septics, that was another issue. And some state regulators have changed names and so we updated those as well in the document. The summary of changes. The ADU size that was adopted by the City of Newberry was 1,000 square feet for that additional dwelling. Now we have moved it to 1,700 square feet, which matches the Alachua County number. We did the Scribner updates to the state agency names and we've made allowances for parcels 10 acres and above for allowing separate septic systems. In the, especially in the agriculture areas where you have the propensity to go forward and divide your land, we wanted to give those folks the ability to, if they did, if they met the minimum qualifications for dividing the land, they wouldn't get themselves stuck by having the septic cause an issue. So on parcels where it's 10 acres and above, you can have your, if 25 acres, you can have your primary home in one area of it and on a separate septic, if approved by the Department of Health, you can have your accessory. The recommendation is again listed there. If you have any questions, I can answer any of those for you.
Very good. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor for discussion if that's the pleasure of the Board.
Actually, I have a question. The recommendation says that we can approve changes, deny changes, table or continue.
Correct.
Stacy, my question for you or Mr. Mayor is, what is the desire of the Building Department on this one? Because it sounds like you would like us to approve. So is the recommendation that you want us to approve it? Is that...
This is a, this is a City Commission decision to move forward with, we've been tasked with bringing it forward. You as the recommending board to the City Commission, these are the, these are the changes that we were told to take a look at. So we have done that and we're bringing it to you first before, as the recommending board for the City Commission.
So we need a motion to discuss it?
Yep, we need a motion to discuss it.
I need a motion to discuss.
Well, you approving the changes?
I mean, I thought we were already going to discuss it.
Yeah, we'll put a motion on and then we discuss it. We can change it through amendment to that kind of thing. So you want a motion to approve? Okay, is there a second? Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second properly on the floor. So what is the discussion that we'd like to have about it? You can ask for other questions. Whatever.
I have a question if I could, please, thank you. Is this something that, obviously if we make this change and Alachua County goes, wait, never mind, we're gonna, we're gonna pull this back down. Will we follow them in that capacity as well?
It depends on what the City Commission requests for staff to take a look at. You know, our direction that we do everything with is based on what the City Commission wants us to do. And so they may examine it and say, we want to mimic them completely and they will direct staff to make that change or leave it.
I mean, I'm sure that doesn't happen very often.
Do you know how long it's been at the 1,700 on, at the county level?
I don't know at the county level. I know ours was adopted in 18. I'm guessing they probably had theirs adopted around the same time.
Do you remember what it was in Levy?
Yes, 1,200.
1,200?
We gave them 1,000 to 1,500 and they went with the 1,200. Actually, 800 to 1,500 and they went with 1,000. I mean, 1,200.
Okay, all right. Does anybody have a lot of heart, one way or the other, changing it or?
Well, I have, I have a couple more questions on it.
Yeah.
So I guess this leads on to what else is being discussed tonight? Is that one of the main reasons that this is, is this, it's nothing to do with later on discussion?
No.
Okay. Why, why are we, why are we coming? Other than the Commission, I'm just kind of curious. Is there like another root reason why we're wanting to change it to 1,700 from where it was? Is this because?
We have had a couple folks. Sure.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm just trying to get clarification.
No, no, that's fine. Mr. Mayor George Marlowe, City Manager, I think that Stacy hit it right, except I maybe wouldn't use the word mimic. We're not trying to mimic Alachua County. We just don't like Alachua County to beat us. So if you could do something in the county, we want private property owners to be able to do it here as well. So, but the serious answer is we did lose some annexations. So if people say, as long as I say in the county, I have more freedom to do with my property than joining the City of Newberry, I think that's a statement that we rebel against, right? So we want to make sure that the people who live in the Newberry exercise the most freedom over their property within the bounds that the P&amp;Z recommends and the Commission sets. But we've had clear messaging from the DIA's, from the Commission, that we want to make sure that we are the biggest respecters of private property rights. And so if you've got mom coming to live with you, but mom needs a kitchen and mom needs a guest bedroom and I can't make that fit, I need 1,500 square feet, right? I was also here when we said it where we said it and I can tell you there wasn't a whole lot of rhyme or reason to making that decision. It was, well, this is kind of in the middle, right? There was some conversation of what we don't want is people building two separate houses, right? And then separating it off, right? But there wasn't a whole lot of study or reference to, this is the right number, right? So if you look around the county, 1,700, Levy County is 1,200. There's not a lot of, you know, logic, I guess, behind it. There's just a, I feel like this is the right number, okay? I hate losing annexations. I think when people want to join the City of Newberry, we want to make sure that they don't find a reason not to. So just want to help out with that answer.
Yeah, I don't disagree with trying to beat Alachua County, especially when it comes to the freedom of our residents. I don't really have a concern other than the, it's back to, I think it was Member Polo that mentioned it, if, if anything happens with the county level that they decide to change something and the fact that we're wording it as we're gonna mimic or be in line with them, does that have any root impact to us? Or does home rule apply at that point where we could be like, hey, we stayed at 1,700, that's where we're gonna be at? I don't care what Alachua County decides to change.
No, like I said, if the Commission sees that and they go and they roll it back to 1,500 or whatever, the Commission can direct staff to take a look at that and say, well, you know, maybe that's what we want to do. Until that point, it'll stay at what it is and there would be no issue with it staying larger than the county.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Ms. Parker?
On the, I guess it's Section 1. Oh no, we're down at 9B. An accessory dwelling unit may be permitted on lots as small as one acre. Is there, is that still 1,700 square feet? Does it, or doesn't? Okay.
So I have a question regarding that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should put that on the record, yes. It's not a head nod.
Are we seeing the same question? I think. No, 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 you have another question, please go. I, I thought you only said one. So the way that I understood it for agricultural specifically is that you could have one dwelling per five acres.
That's correct.
So this would be, we are doing the same one. So we're, we are thinking alike. So this would be basically changing that and allowing it down to one acre.
So one acre's been in the rules since, since the beginning of time, since 2018 when we started. It's not underlined. The only thing that's being added is underlined and the only things being deleted are strike through. The one acre was always there.
So then what's the difference between the ones that we've been seeing that's only per one, one residential unit per five acres? When did that change?
No, it has not changed. What, what, what this section, you said you're, you're looking at 9B?
I want to make sure I understand this. So if we like, a recent one that we just split up that was two plots equal to five acres, if they, if they decide to put an in-law unit, they just need to have at least one acre assigned to that property, correct?
That's correct.
So they could take that five acre lot and break it out. So what if, what prevents them from doing that four times?
So I think that what this code section is related to is we have one acre lots throughout the county.
I understand.
I mean, throughout the city. So if you have a lot and you're only at an acre, you can have your primary home and a 1,700 square foot accessory dwelling unit. We don't let people divide their land down legally to one acre in the agriculture areas because that doesn't meet our density. These were those non-conforming lots, lots that were old plats that were, that we've honored.
Are technically ag, but.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's the clarification that I was trying to give.
This has nothing to do with the subdivision regulations.
Got it.
This is totally separate. This was already in there in.
Grandfather of the law.
What they're saying is basically if you own less than five acres all the way down to an acre in ag. So if you own a half an acre in ag, this does not apply to you. You cannot make application for an ADU.
Got it.
If you have an acre, because there are many lots already out there we, that are legal lots of record because they were broken out prior to 1994 or 92, we allow you to continue and you can apply for an ADU on that legal lot of record.
Got it, that makes a lot more sense.
Yep.
And then the 1,700, I believe when I looked that up, it was actually the average housing.
Nationwide.
No, no, not, I didn't know if it was nationwide, but for Alachua County, that's the average, you know, family dwelling unit residential here in the county. So I figured, and that made sense because my, my three-bedroom, two-bath, it's about 768 square feet, so that makes sense. Okay, that, that's clarification from me, I'm sorry. I go back to Ms. Polo.
There you have it. Stacy, I have.
I had one other question. I remember when I was looking at this from our in-law suite and I would seem to remember there being a provision of 1,700 or 50% of the primary dwelling. Can you talk through that and make sure the Board understands that part also?
Sure. So you have two options with an ADU. You can go with the square footage of 1,700 or you can go with 50% of the primary dwelling unit. So you have a 3,000 square foot home. Actually, that's not a good example because it's only 1,500, but it's 1,500 square feet. So it's 50% of the primary dwelling. So you've got a 4,000 square foot home. You can have up to a 2,000 square foot dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit on that parcel because your primary home is the 4,000. So, and the other piece I wanted to mention was you cannot have these on parcels without primary dwellings. We've had some folks come to us and say, we just want to put an ADU on our land. Well, that's not, you have to have the primary before you get the accessory. So, yeah.
And it'll be an application process every time? Or if they meet the minimum requirements, that's not necessary?
Yeah, they have to make an application for the ADU.
If they meet all of these, can they reasonably deny the application if we decided to or pretty much just checks the boxes so we have to say yes?
It's an administrative approval.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, property seconded. Is there any discussion from the public? Going once, going twice? Members of the Board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Perfect. Item number three is Newberry Town Home Small Scale Future Land Use Map, Amendment for Residential Low Density Four Dwelling Units Per Acre to Residential High Density 20 Dwelling Units Per Acre. And Madam Attorney, would you like to read this ordinance into the record?
Yes, I will. It's ordinance number 2025-84, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91 as amended, relating to a small-scale amendment to the future land use map of the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan, providing for a change in future land use classification from residential low density four dwelling units per acre to residential high density 20 dwelling units per acre on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of .72 acres, tax parcel number 02118-003-000 and is more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. This is just the land use change. We will follow this up with a companion rezoning, which will be quasi judicial right after this. So Jean-Paul, you have the floor to walk us through this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jean-Paul Perez with the Community Development Department. The request before the Board tonight is a small-scale future land use map amendment from residential lowest density, which is our lowest suburban urban density to residential high, which is our highest suburban urban density for residential uses. The project is called Newberry Town Homes. We don't have a plan at this time, just a request to change the land use and the recommended motion is to recommend adoption of this ordinance, changing the land use. The agent for the application is JB Pro, PBR Financials Incorporated, is the owner of the property. The current zoning is residential single-family too and there is a companion rezoning application. And I'll get into why we're going with residential high density opposed to residential medium density. They would go with the medium density if they could, but unfortunately our comp plan dictates that they have to go with the high density. Site is currently 0.72 net acres and 0.94 gross acres. And this just shows generally where the city is, or I'm sorry, where the property is within the city, right west of the post office, if my graphic isn't too jumbled. Where the fire, Station 28 is. This is an aerial of the property. I didn't drive by it today, but it's pretty well grown there, a lot of canopy. This is the Google Street View. This is from 2023. It's within the CRA, so it's an undeveloped property within the CRA. So there's an opportunity to increase our TIP funding for the CRA here. And this shows the current land use pattern in the area. You can see that there's commercial, some public uses there that commercial abuts the Main Street down the historic Black Neighborhood as well as US 27 and then State Route 26, where you have a lot of commercial. And they're looking to complete what is more of like a urban style of land use pattern where you have your commercial, your multifamily and then your lower intensities kind of nestled behind all that activity. The proposed land use is, should say, RHD, residential high density. And this is why we're going with RHD. I don't know why I had RMD stuck in my head, but... So with the residential low density, our future land use element states what zoning districts are allowed within that land use category. RSF 2, which is the current zoning of the property, is an appropriate zoning district within that land use category. The project as it's being laid out, the agent decided to go with RMF 2 to fit their development pattern. Ironically, our zoning for RMF 1 doesn't allow for your typical townhouse development. So it still requires about a 5,000 square foot lot where most townhouse units, if you're selling it fee simple, structure and land, that is usually on a 10, like a 2,000 minimum plot of land. And that's what the RMF 2 offers for a minimum lot size if they're selling it off fee simple. There are still probably some common elements like the roof, party walls, stormwater, that the townhouse owners would need to maintain together. But ultimately, to get to an appropriate sized lot for re, you know, an infill development project, they're looking at RMF 2. RMF 2 is only allowed in residential high density. They do have the, the land area to do residential medium density and get the eight units that they're looking for. But again, because of the, and 20 is way above that, they would effectively be able to get like 18 units out of this one parcel with the gross density. So that's why they're going with residential high density opposed to residential medium density. Any questions about that? That's a lot of information. Okay, cool. We have one other project in the city that is also residential high density. That is Hammock Oaks Apartments, also right against single-family, also kind of buffering between commercial and also on a major corridor, County Road 235. Probably gets not as much traffic as 2741, but it gets its fair share. Level of service, there's available capacity. We're looking at a vanilla straight land use category here. So we just look to see if there is available capacity to serve the maximum potential intensity that's, or density that's allowed there and there is that capacity available. And once we get the development plan, we'll start communicating that information to the school board so we don't look at that ourselves directly, kind of outside of our area. And we did find the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. And again, the recommended action is to recommend adoption of the ordinance. And after tonight's hearing, it will be heard on first reading at the January 12, 2026, City Commission hearing. That completes my presentation. The applicants here, they have a presentation as well. Same thing for the zoning, which will follow this. Staff will give a presentation and then they have a presentation prepared for that as well. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Jean-Paul before he leaves the podium? Okay, the applicant, yes, ma'am.
Maybe explain a little bit what infill development is a little bit more in case there might be new folks that don't understand.
Yeah. The term infill development is just meaning that there are development pockets or pockets of undeveloped land or, you know, surrounded by mostly developed land. And so the infill development is just taking that underutilized land and bringing it up to whatever is needed in the area. In this case, more housing options in this particular area is definitely needed for Newberry. Again, you saw that the only other multifamily that we have is an affordable housing project. And so there's not that option for folks in Newberry, especially with the kind of the job market here. A lot of it's service industry jobs and a lot of our higher earners are professions that are solely located in Gainesville per, like our jobs report for our census tract. So does that make sense, what infill is and what it offers here? One of the, the city is, I wouldn't say excited about it, but encouraging the development of this area. This is a, usually if there's an undeveloped parcel in the city, there's a reason why, it's usually infrastructure related and this is one of those gaps in infrastructure. And so with this, having that higher density, it spreads the cost of having to extend utilities to the property, which needs to be done here. So water needs to be brought to this property. Sewer runs along Third Ave, but there's no water directly to the property and it's going to be looped into the system. That gets very expensive and so usually there's... gets very expensive. And so usually, there's a bit of a trade-off that occurs there with allowing higher density, so there's more market absorption for the units and cost absorption based on the number of units. Thank you.
Okay. Does JB Pro want to come forward and do their application, or their presentation? Are you all queued up with a, okay. Do you know how to use the clicker there?
Hi, good evening, Board. My name is Tara Howell. I'm a senior planner with JB Pro out of Gainesville, and I am here representing our clients on this small-scale future land use amendment. Thank you, Jean-Paul. A lot of my presentation is going to repeat what he's already told you, but I will go over it with you, and if you have any questions for us. So again, this is Newberry Town Homes, parcel 02118-003-000. It is .96 acres gross, .72 acres net. The owner is PBR Financials Incorporated. It's located at the intersection of Northwest 251st Street and Northwest Third Avenue. So this is your current future land use map on the left. You can see the red is your commercial, and the yellow is your residential low-density, and the blue is the public future land uses. And you see your subject parcel there, which we're discussing today. That's the residential low-density. It's what it's currently under, allows four dwelling units per acre. And then in the proposed future land use, you can see that parcel as residential high-density, which allows a max density of 20 units per acre. So we feel that this is compatible with the surrounding area for multiple reasons. One, logical infill. It is located within your urban service area, as Jean-Paul's already mentioned. It is an undeveloped parcel in the midst of a developed area, so it's just a little pocket that is perfect for what we like to call a transitional area between your commercial and your lower density. So it's a natural transition for a medium-density in there. Surrounded by residential and community-serving uses, this would support a walkable and connected-type neighborhood. It is near existing public infrastructure, as Jean-Paul mentioned. It's near a major transportation corridor, and it is near other community services. So it is consistent with your comp plan. Just to break it down a little bit further, for your future land use element, again, it supports compact, connected, walkable neighborhoods, and it expands the variety of housing options within the City of Newberry. For public infrastructure and services, the site will be serviced by existing water, sewer, and transportation networks. Again, as Jean-Paul mentioned, we will be extending that to the lot. There are no adverse level-of-service impacts anticipated. All level-of-service impacts that have been calculated do fit within the capacity, so there is efficient public services available. For your housing element, it advances that missing middle-class and attainable housing goal between your single-family and rental. It is a, that missing middle-class, that's basically what we're looking for. It also will ensure safe and high-quality housing in the area. And then, as staff also mentioned, as far as public school facilities, when we get to the development portion, we will be reaching out and getting an approval capacity letter from Latchwell County School Systems. So neighborhood impact, it increases your housing choices, as we've already mentioned. It respects the surrounding land use pattern and scale. It promotes a stable, resilient neighborhood form, and it strengthens the neighborhood vitality by adding residents who will support local services and amenities. These are your summaries. I do just want to touch on a little bit the request for the high densities. Jean-Paul did a great job explaining it. I'll kind of put it in my own words as well, if you have any questions. It was our original intent to do it as residential medium-density. The first application I submitted was actually for that. You all had just finished up a great Comprehensive Plan update, and so when I went back and read the new Comprehensive Plan, we realized that the zoning category that we were seeking was no longer allowed in the medium-density future land use. We'll talk a little bit more about that in depth with the next petition. The lot sizes that will be accompanying the proposed development is, they are a little larger than what would be allowed, I'm sorry, yeah, a little, no, they're a little smaller than the minimum size for the multifamily one. So we had to step up to multifamily two, and then with the comp plan change, we had to go for high-density in order to get the multifamily two. It is the proposed project, and the size of the lot is projected to be eight units. They will be attached townhomes. But this is just a summary, kind of goes over everything we've already talked about as to why we feel that this is a perfect location for this project. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Is the plan to have them as for sale versus for rent, so they won't be townhome rentals? They'll be individually-owned townhomes?
So I can certainly speak to what the current proposed plan is. That is my client, the developers, that is their plan. Yes, they will be sold individually. They will be attached. I say that only because technically, it doesn't have a bearing on the future land use change. I don't, I can't make promises for the future, but that is, that is what they are, their plan is, yes.
Ms. Carey?
My question is, as far as the actual, townhomes are very vague from where I come from in California, so I tend to use that as my base reference. Are we talking a two-story with a garage kind of a situation, because there's very limited parking in that area? And we just, we just described, you know, some, some sequences of what would be permitted and so forth, and I'm very encouraging to see a townhome community in that unused lot right now, because it's just a lot of overgrown trees.
Yes.
We'll actually get those specifics when we have a development plan.
Well, the reason why, the reason why I ask that question is, is that, is there specifics within, I mean, maybe this is a question for the city, is there, is there a difference between medium-density and high-density that would control how many, not going like in excess of three floors or something like that, because that would stand out, you know, as you're going past on the freeway?
Yeah, so the land development regulations, I'm just going to fast-forward to
Sure, thank you.
the multifamily. So with RMF2, oh, I didn't put the building height here. I want to say it's 35 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the actual development regulations are contained in the, in the zoning district, but ultimately, oh, there we go. But ultimately, the decision right now is, oh, we want the smaller lot sizes, so we're going with the more intense zoning district, and it's making us go with that.
I understand that, that was a limitation. I understand, like, I absolutely understand that. I'm just saying, is there a preventative measure so that it doesn't turn into a multi-level, like apartment complex look of a townhome? Because I've seen those before.
Yeah.
It's proposed one way, and then it comes in, and then it's, we're handling a different situation, and so...
No, so that's one of the tricky things, and that's usually why we discourage having a conceptual plan at this stage. In the state of Florida, contract zoning is, we're not at the zoning part yet, but that's usually what it leads to with, we'll give you the zoning, but we're gonna, you have to fulfill these certain obligations, and we can't get into that. And so it has to be...
There's nothing in the code that says any, anything excess other than 35 feet.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Let me double-check that, though. You're looking at it now? Okay, cool.
Thank you. I just, I just, because we don't have anything in the apartments that you guys are referencing.
Yeah.
Are basically ranch-style, like, bungalows that are right next to our neighborhood, and they're very dated.
Yeah.
I don't expect, obviously, that's what they're going to be building, but I'm just saying, like, it's, there's limited parking there, if you're talking about eight units.
Yeah, so the zoning...
16 cars minimum, possibly more. That's a lot of vehicles for that.
It is.
So I'm assuming, you know, that they would have parking facilities, and then you're building on top of that, so that's, that's why I was asking that.
What, so there's some limiting factors to this. They're, they're double-fronted, driveway access, the parking requirements, and stormwater is usually the killer. And they're having struggles on design when it comes to stormwater, because they have to...
And the kitty-corner unit is also the, the collection of, of stormwater as well.
We haven't seen the final plan yet, so we don't know what it's going to be at the end of the day, but stormwater is kind of distributed all over the site from the conceptual plans we've seen. But they're, with allowing that land use, you're allowing all the zoning categories. So let me just get back to that.
I guess my, my thing is, is I wanted to ask, is like, there's a limitation on height, which I'm quite glad for, but they can't come back and say, oh, we want 16 instead of eight? Or will, will they can because of the way it's zoned, and then we...
The development plan still has to come before the board. So at the end of the day, there's still another bite at that apple, but the horse is out of the barn as far as density goes. So if they said, hey, we want to do 18 units, that would be the case. Is that possible? Probably not. Most regulations in the multifamily and urban areas allow for a potential that's way above what's achievable, or even what the market will take. In townhouses, I will, I just want to touch on that real quick. They do have to have a ground-floor entrance, and they have to be two stories. That may...
So it's the same encounter?
Yeah. It may have the parking outside of the unit, but it may include the parking inside of the unit. Usually, it's just a one-car garage that's interior, and then a parking lot scenario.
Yeah, I've seen them as, as tall as four.
They do get big.
Depending on how narrow they are in the lots, and so that, that was, I was like, that's going to stick out like a sore thumb, especially to the little mobile home that's across the street, you know?
Yeah.
Just trying to be mindful of the neighbors there, too. Thank you.
Certainly. You're welcome.
All right, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion that's moved and properly seconded to recommend approval. Is there any discussion from the public? Go ahead. Is the microphone still on, sir? She didn't turn, you didn't turn off, did you?
I don't think I have.
Okay. Should be green on the caller.
Paul Harvey, Mr. Mayor, Board, thank you. Just a quick positive comment. I think this is a really very positive step. I think, you know, the higher density we have within that half-mile mile of the city center is super important of affordable housing, all those other issues that have already been spoken about. So I think this is great, and just encourage the city to continue to kind of pursue and support these opportunities when they come up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Just wanted to add to Board Member Carey's question, maximum height is 72 feet, which is a blanket number across all commercial and the higher intensity for RMF2 anyway.
Okay.
So it can't go four stories?
We could go, we could probably go six stories with that.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a ladder truck that'll get there, so it'll burn down to the ground.
That's, yeah, yes, sure. That's even more of a concern.
How can they be able to sell them to people as tall as me?
Six-foot ceilings?
I don't think that, I don't think that's the code. I don't know them all by heart, but I don't think that's the code.
I couldn't even do this.
So we have a move, a motion that's moved and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I'm going to say nay.
Okay. The motion passes four to one. That is item number three. Item number four is the companion rezoning. Madam Attorney, this is going to be a quasi judicial, so stand by. Me reading my little script, and I will cue you in. It looks like you'll do the swearing-in and the reading of the ordinance, okay?
Very good.
So we're entering a quasi judicial procedure. This means that the board will stop being a legislative board and will become a judicial board, which means that we have to follow certain rules and adhere to a different standard of decision-making. The primary rule we must follow concerns testimony, and the substantial incompetent evidence standard must be met when the judicial board meets, or makes a decision, rather. The standard states the following, quote, "All public testimony will be taken under oath. Everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence. The giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts. Closing argument will be limited to the evidence of record only," end quote. Now, Madam Attorney, if you would please read into the record the ordinance or resolution by title and number.
This is ordinance number 2025-85, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, relating to the rezoning of .72 contiguous acres, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from residential single-family RSF2 to residential multifamily RMF2. Zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, tax parcel number 02118-003-000, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm also going to ask the attorney to swear in the applicant, staff, and any participants requesting to speak. Madam, or Madam Attorney, would you please read them into the record?
Yes, I see that everyone who intends to provide testimony has stood, raised their right hand, and do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this public hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Could you please state your names for the record as well, moving from left to right? Thank you. All right. Before we begin, we need to disclose any experte communications and disclose whether any member of the board physically inspected the property. Experte communications are any conversations or transmission of information that may have bearing or influence on any voting member's decision. I will begin to my, from my immediate right, member, Urched?
No.
No.
Nope.
Madam Carey? No. And I do not either. So now I will explain the order of presentations that we will follow for every quasi judicial item before us tonight, and this is the only one that we have. But the staff will begin with an overview, and then the applicant has an opportunity to present, followed by the staff report recommendation. I've not been contacted by any third-party interveners, so we'll move right directly to public comment. We'll have three minutes per comment for that. The applicat, or the applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine. The staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine. Then the members of the decision-making body through the chair may ask questions of any of the participants involved. Final argument may be made by the applicant or staff related solely to the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and introduced into the record. The city attorney will then advise the decision-making body as to the applicable law and the factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application. Deliberation of the application, followed by a motion to either approve, approve with conditions, continue, or deny the application. So before us is a staff overview to start, and Jean-Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Jean-Paul Perez with the Community Development Department. As read by Madam Attorney, this is a rezoning request from residential single-family RSF2 to residential multiple-family RMF2 for a project known as Newberry Town Homes. The recommended action is a motion to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the rezoning. And first reading for the ordinance will be on January 26, I'm sorry, January 12, 2026, at 7:00 p.m. The applicant is JB Pro. The owner is PBR Financials Incorporated. The proposed zoning district is RMF2. The current land use is still residential low-density today, but the rezoning cannot be adopted unless the, the land use is also changed first. So the property is 0.72 net acres and 0.94 gross acres, thereabouts, more or less. This is an aerial image showing the general location of the property within the city. Here's an aerial showing the current condition of the property, and here is a...
Bless you. Thank you.
Oh, bless you. Here is a street view of the property from 2023, and the current zoning district is RSF2. I'm sorry, yeah, RSF2, and you can see that's a predominant zoning district in this area. Also, in the City of Newberry, generally, the older development is all RSF2, including Newberry Oaks. Newberry Oaks is all RSF2. The proposed zoning district is RMF2, and I just want to go into the differences between the two districts for uses and some development standards. I've bolded the uses that are different between each district. Otherwise, they're all the same. Single-family is allowed both in the single-family as well as in the multifamily district proposed, park-and-wreck areas, et cetera. I won't bore you with reading that. And these are the uses that are different from the single-family to the multifamily. So now they would be able to do duplexes and multifamily development, including all varieties, like garden apartments, mid-rises, as it may be. And high schools are permitted as a use by right. Instead of having nurseries, they have nursing homes in multifamily and they.
Senior living.
And instead of childcare centers, they have, you know, group care facilities, which are for a variety of uses, but generally are for folks seeking help with addiction. Setbacks for RSF2 are 25 feet in the front, 10 on the side, 15 in the rear. And the minimum lot area for RSF2 is 10,000 square feet and must have a minimum lot width, which is the, the street frontage, that, that measurement there of 85 feet. And for the multifamily, single-family goes from 25 feet to 20 feet for the front yard setback, which is more in line with a lot of the newer neighborhoods that are being built and more in line with more traditional ways of developing. If you go through some of the older parts of Newberry in the downtown, you notice those houses are much closer to the street in some cases. Sometimes they're further back, but generally they're encouraging just, all the horse and carriage were kept in the back of the house, not in the front, where we park our cars in the front of the house now, and that 25 feet is usually sufficient distance for you to park a shiny new vehicle in the front of the house. 10 feet on the side, 15 in the rear, which is same. For multifamily, the front yard setback increases from 25 to 30 feet, and then the side yard setback is 15 feet, opposed to being 10 feet. And then the rear is increased also from 15 to 20. So the developable area gets smaller, but there's usually a lot more aggregate improvements that are needed for multifamily developments, like providing their own stormwater, which a single-family house wouldn't need to do, but with multiple units, you now need to, you know, provide stormwater for all of that additional impervious space, including parking. These are the different development standards based on the house type. These are dealing strictly with lot areas. And so, single-family, the smallest is 7,500 square feet per lot, which is the equivalent of our RSF3. And that's generally what we have in a lot of the newer neighborhoods. They're somewhere between 6,500 and 8,000, but generally landing in the 7,000 range in a 50-foot-wide lot for a single-family. Duplexes, this is having two units right next to each other, one-party wall. These can be single-story or multi-story if they would like. And these are 10,000 square feet, same as RSF2. Mind you, there are two units on it this time, and then an 85-foot lot width. Then the multifamily, which is what they're looking at per the zoning district, they have a minimum site area, so in order for you to have multifamily, you need to have at least 16,335 square feet. We've been giving you site area and acreage, so that's a little over a quarter of an acre, 16,000 square feet. So I would say about a third of an acre, actually. It might be a more accurate fraction. And an 80-foot-wide lot. And then within that, you have the RMF1 area per dwelling unit and then the RMF2 area per dwelling unit. So as I was discussing during the land use, that RMF1 requires 5,445, five square feet within that 16,000 minimum to be dedicated per unit. And the RMF2 only requires 2,178 square feet to be dedicated per dwelling unit, so. And then a height we talked about. Height in RSF2 is 35 feet and height in RMF2 is 72 feet. The adjacent public, if it was commercial, would be 72 feet as well. So that entire commercial corridor could build out to a 72-foot height. Nobody does. It's just, the need isn't there yet for all that square footage. But it's not just 35 feet against 72 feet, it's also 72 feet against 72 feet, just to keep that in mind. Concurrenty will be determined at time of development application, and impact fees will apply to this development under the current schedule. And an extension of any utilities or services to the property will be a cost borne by the applicant. So the city won't be obligated to extend water to the property unless we were already doing it as part of our comprehensive improvement, or, I'm sorry, capital improvement plan. They would have to bear that expense. I just wanted to talk about next steps before I close out. So they may need to replat the property. Plats are now administrative. Site plans are required for any development of this property in a multifamily nature, so you will see the site plan if one is submitted. And then it's building permit after that. So this will come back before the board at least one more time for multifamily, and that'll be in the form of a site plan. So you'll be able to see the building, parking, stormwater, how it's all going to look in the end. That completes my presentation. The applicant has a presentation, and I will turn it over to Tara Hall with JB Pro. Thank you so much.
Ms. Tara, did you want to rest on your prior presentation? You have anything else to add? You're more than welcome to do either.
Oh.
You're welcome to do either, doesn't matter.
I've never been asked that before, actually. I don't think so. Everything that is in mine is.
Okay, yeah. And you'll still have a, you'll still have a closing argument opportunity if something strikes you, so don't feel like you've abandoned all opportunity.
Okay, now, then, if it pleases the board, that's fine.
Okay.
It would just be a repeat of what's already been said by both myself and staff.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Is there any public comment? You have up to three minutes to do so. Seeing none. Is there any opportunity, either of you need to cross-examine the other? Okay, very good. And any questions from the decision-making body of the applicant or staff?
I have a question for staff.
Staff?
It's about the height thing. Didn't we not discuss a height limitation at some point during either the comprehensive plan? We were talking about this, the easement length or how, you know, how far we had to go back, and I'm pretty sure we talked about height. So does that not apply here?
So the overlay is where we talked about height, and that limit was 45 feet for multifamily developments.
I did remember that, thank you.
And that applies for properties along 2741 and 26. And so this lies along 2741. And I wish I had a map, but I don't. But they kind of carved out what they saw was the downtown area. They didn't want to put those barriers on the downtown development to encourage that redevelopment opportunity that exists there. And so this particular property lies within that doughnut hole. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because we don't get many opportunities for currently, with our current growth, for these type of developments. Was there an opportunity to do a variant?
Yeah, my mic, my microphone's on.
Was there an opportunity to do a variance using the lower zone with the smaller minimum square footage so that they, that we could limit some, like the aspects, like the height, how many units and so forth? Because I know we can't see the plan and I'm not seeing to make it, I, I want there to be, I want to make that very clear. I'm totally supportive of apartments or townhomes going in that area. I just don't like that there's this unforeseen because of one limitation. Wouldn't this be a good opportunity to have a variance to apply? Because we've done variances for other areas where the comp plan is in conflict.
Yeah, the appropriate time to address building height and compatibility would be when there's a development plan before the, the body. I mentioned contract zoning previously and giving somebody zoning, granting somebody an upzoning based on them performing certain things or limiting it in certain ways usually is, well, is a discouraged practice and has gotten certain local governments in South Florida sued in the past over.
That's not, that's not what I want to do.
Okay.
I'm just being cognizant of the fact that the majority of the properties, with exception of one side, is all residential. And so I'm trying to be cognizant of, like, yes, I want us to grow appropriately, but also be cognizant of those members. We don't have any of those neighbors here. They may be fine with it.
Yeah.
Or they may have not opened that piece of mail, that, the notification, or they don't understand the process. So I just, I want to be fair to that.
Yeah.
Aspect of it, and, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to nitpick. I'm just saying if there's another way that there's limitations so that, like, like, would, you know? Remember Parker said, like, that we don't get the surprise. I don't think they're going to do that. I want to make that very clear. I, I do think they're coming in good standing in it.
Now would not be the appropriate time to do that because of.
So when the plan came in, we could ask for a variance then?
When the plan came, you would not be unreasonable. There is definitely a, a rational nexus there to keeping the height at a certain level. Just because it's, the maximum is 72 feet does not mean that it's a potential that we're going to have a little.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is that when there's limits there and that's the last available multifunctional home, it's only being selected because of one aspect.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's the only aspects there, like, why can't we do the lower level with a variance?
Because the comp plan doesn't allow it.
So the only way to do it would be to change the comp plan with an amendment to allow a variance in these special cases.
Correct, yeah. And I don't know how this would be seen by the state, but Senate Bill 180 is kind of messing up anything that's going through the, yeah. So making things more restrictive, which I don't think that would be, because we're allowing, it would be allowing RMF2.
The way that I understood it, and if I'm wrong, Ms. Tara, please correct me. She said the only thing that was preventative was that one thing.
Yeah.
That the original application was for the lower level. And so I'm just trying to make it to where there's not lots of questions later on, and it feels like we're getting ourselves into trouble later on. That's why my question.
Mr. Mayor?
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
Board Member Archet?
Just for clarification and to put, to help my board member peace of mind, these are town, what we're asking for is townhomes, correct? Not apartments?
Well, I think Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Board Member Carrie is promoted.
Promoted me without, did not sign up for that.
So the only reason I ask is because logically speaking, investors speaking, if I was an investor and I was building townhomes, there's no way on God's green earth I'm going to build a 70-foot-high townhome in Newberry, knowing that I'm never going to recoup my money. However, to her underst, like, to, to her understanding of it's an apartment, apartments are a different story. Apartments, the higher I go, the more money I can get.
They can do apartments here, though.
They could, that's what I'm saying. They could come back and change it, and that's.
Well, they have to come back to us still with the plans, correct?
Correct.
So what we're approving here is just.
But we, well, he, he said that we can't change and say, oh, because you changed from townhomes to apartments, we can't say no then.
But we can still deny.
You can, you can deny the recommendation.
We can still, we can still deny the, when it comes in as a plan. We've done that already before here on this board, where plans have come in, they've changed and said, no, we've wanted this, and they've gone back to change to that.
I, I understand.
So there's a lot of strength on this board, even though we are a recommendation more than anything else, and we don't hold any real weight. A commission, I believe, respects us enough that if we ask the city to go back or the applicant to go back, they'll send them back, and they've done it before.
I just think this is an opportunity, I, I brought this up, is this is an opportunity that as we grow as a city, this looks like there's a weakness in our comp plan that we should consider in the future after the whole 180 mess is obviously clarified, because I'm not trying to make things more restrictive for people to build. I'm not trying to do that. I'm just saying that there seems like there's a big window there between eight and 20.
We, we are looking to change those. We have hired a consultant to work on the land development regulation requirement, and that allowing RMF2 in only the residential high-density might have been something that probably was appropriate to have in the residential medium-density as well. And 72 feet is just across the board the maximum number that was created back in 92.
And I don't, I don't think they're going to do that, but I also have seen somebody ask for restructuring and redistrict, you know, re, rezoning, and then they don't move forward with the project. It's happening near our.
And they're not the applicant eventually down the line, yeah.
It's happened near our neighborhoods where things were supposed to be built and they don't, and they came forward, they follow the process. So I just, I just want to set up that if there is another way to work with them to make it happen, but also prevent those what-ifs, why not ask? It doesn't hurt to ask.
Certainly.
We got the lawyer here now, full-time, to ask, if it's, it's okay to do it.
First day.
Does either staff or the applicant wish to make any kind of final arguments?
No, sir.
Okay. No, okay. Madam Attorney, could you please advise the decision-making body of the applicable law and factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application?
Yes, Board Members, in order to recommend approval of this application and requested amendment, you must find that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the city's land development regulations, and you should base that decision on the competent substantial evidence that was presented to you this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. If there's no other deliberations, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And seconded to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, let's.
We don't really have to do any discussion and come on there.
Yeah, we have that, we already did that. We're at the last, you're. And we'll just preface this by doing a roll call vote. Ms. Thomas, are you?
She had a question.
Okay, then we'll just do a roll call vote. Ms. Thomas? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? 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 Okay, I guess I didn't need to. All right, motion passes unanimous.
No, I'm not. It's, it's on my TV thing.
Uh, okay. We're done with the quasi judicial landing this plane. We have no agenda items tonight. Are there any other topics for discussion from the board? Ms. Kathy?
I have to make an, I, I need to make one more statement. Sorry. It's not on your, it's on, on your, not on your thing. Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. During my item for the accessory dwelling unit, I did not mention that the date and time certain for the first hearing of city commission will be Monday, January 12th at 7:00 p.m. I needed to make that, put that on the record. Sorry, forgot to do that.
Are you sure you're doing?
I didn't. It was on the screen.
Uh, any topics for the?
Can plug our stuff now? Or are we still talking about?
No, feel.
Plug away.
Okay, so.
Plug away.
I'm not going to take the Christmas parade like normal because I have a new person who's graciously doing that. However, this, um.
Who's that sucker?
Don't say that!
Short straw, short.
Um, Thursday nights at Tortilla's patio, you can play bingo, and I just went. I don't, I'm not necessarily a big bingo player because I don't like to lose and I don't like playing some jiu-jitsu. So it's a lot for me to do that, but I really had a good time. It was super fun. It's free. All you do is, well, you order food. It's absolutely not free, but you order food, and then there's 10 games, and it's very, if you like, you know, not competing, it's fun to just guess.
You're competing for speed.
I went home and like, you know, I had to calm down. It was fun.
Oh, my word.
It was a lot of fun. And Claudia, she, you know, at Community Council Square, she's doing that also. Hold on, because I don't have my reading glasses. I can't see. I'm being my mom tonight. Okay, so the same day as the Christmas parade, which is December 20th, there is the Nana's Gingerbread Competition, which is named after my mother, of course, and it's a snowy block party also. And I think that Nana's Gingerbread House is at the municipal building still, correct? And also after the parade is February Town Square, the Christmas Festival, and it's named after Mama Santa, wagon rides, crafts, music, food, bonfire. Oh, Bounce House is not Bonfire Houses. Bounce House, the freaks and.
It becomes a very different.
I hope, I hope that they're not watching.
Bonfire houses.
Thanks a lot for working that. So there's a lot going on, a lot. And I know I left some stuff out for Main Street because I didn't get screenshot it fast enough, so somebody please add Main Street.
Ms. Carrie?
I will speak specifically just for NES. We had a really successful Read-A-Thon, which was the first time raised over, I believe, $11,000, and the students exceeded their goal of over 110,000 minutes. So I wanted to give kudos to the PTO over there that really started an initiative, and it was a really busy week. We also were able to feed 26 local families here with donations, so thank you to all the families who donated for that. I know that there was a lot in our community who donated and helped. I know that there was a lot in our community who donated and helped between Country Fair and all that. It was really nice to see us all come together. The NES Bingo was amazing, so thank you, Manager Marlowe and our little Commissioner Elf for coming out. I was very competitive about that and I won, I won four times, so yes, I was, it was very fun.
Bingo!
We do have, we do have our book fair, so if you guys are looking for any last-minute items or, and you don't have somebody that is at the school, but you have little ones to shop for, you can still shop through the book fair. Just let us know. There's contact with somebody of us in the PTO. And last but not least, I got voluntold to be part of the Newberry Historical Association as vice chair. So if you are going to be coming by for the tree lighting, we will be at the festival selling tickets, but I will also be there during the tree lighting. So if you don't get a chance to meet us at the tables, we'll be selling tickets five dollars each or five for twenty. And we have so many baskets.
Seven.
Seven baskets.
Seven baskets.
Hundreds of dollars. And I'm sure I'm going to be like taking this from, but I want to say thank you to our new community member Bravo Markets for donating three of those baskets and Mark from the pawn shop, and it was just like so many amazing things. And if you are a nostalgic person from the Watermelon Association, the Cookie Jar, that's the Little Red Schoolhouse, which is where.
Iconic.
The iconic, there's only, I think, a handful of them left. There, it's, it's literally worth the ticket and if you won the entire basket, that, that's the most valuable thing in there. So I really recommend you guys buying tickets. All of the proceeds goes to the association, obviously, to encourage the renovation and the history of our amazing city, which is the, what is it, Manager Marlowe, the, what is it, the best city?
Christmas capital?
The best, the Christmas capital of Alachua County, yes. I wanted to make sure I said that correctly. That's our thing I had, thank you.
There's more than just books, right?
There is more than just books.
Because Katie Farnes used to rape my mother over like.
And I'll be there all week, so you can, you can message me on social media or just come, like, I'll be there every morning for the rest of this week helping with that.
Cute items.
Yes.
Ms. Paula?
The Newberry High School Boys and Girls varsity lacrosse teams are seeking sponsorship. If you are a local business owner and you would like to hear my melodious voice over the loudspeaker shouting out your business name during lacrosse home games, both for the boys and the girls, because I'm a sucker, let me know. I'll be glad to take your money and sing your business's praises from the booth.
How long does the season go?
It runs from January to late March, early April.
So they have time to.
Yes, they have time.
Ms. Parker?
Okay, I got lots going on, so.
I've heard.
Yeah, a little bit. So December twentieth is the Christmas parade in Newberry. I am taking charge of that and organizing it this year for the first time. Please help me. No, it is, it's going to be awesome.
Let's all bow our heads for Ms. Parker.
Never run a parade before, so everyone, please bear with me, but I am organized and I coordinate a lot of other events, so I'm hoping this will run smooth as well. If you want to participate, there is a JOT form. It is on Newberry Main Street Organization's festival part of their webpage. Please fill that out. I will reach out to you. I've seen a lot of questions. Parade starts at five-thirty. It'll run right down the middle of downtown, so bring your family, everybody line up, bring some chairs, some blankets, some to sit on, because the concrete isn't always so comfortable. And then we will start rolling down around five-thirty. So, and, and, you know, there's Santa and lots of other cool things to see, so. And to biggyback off of NHA. If you also want to buy tickets and you can't make it to the tree lighting on December sixth, please let one of us know. We will be happy to work with you to get raffle tickets, so don't miss that opportunity. Drowning time is December thirteenth. We will do a live video on Facebook from the Little Red Schoolhouse, so you can win that Little Red Schoolhouse Cookie Jar.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. In honor of your mother and you, I will, I will say, for the parade, please always remember there is one Santa at the parade.
Oh, one.
One Santa.
One.
So I want to make sure that, Ms. Parker, that you're taking this over, that you always got to reiterate, there is one Santa and one Santa only at the parade.
There is only one Santa. We have our Santa. He is the Santa of Newberry. That's it.
You'd be surprised how.
Yeah.
How.
So.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
For months after.
I'll never forget that and I've always took him that.
Yeah, I think we've got it pretty much now, like.
One Santa.
Yeah, everybody kind of. I'll put that in my emails.
Thank you. So a couple of things. First, I want to, I want to give a big thank you to city staff, especially to our utilities department. They are, I've done wonderful. If you guys aren't aware, I recently just went through a very fun transition of building a house and moving into the house and then selling my house and then having to, in the process, pay two utility bills and trying to figure out how to finagle that fun stuff. And I want to give a big shout out to Terry in our utilities department for literally spending twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes with me on the phone, going through my AMI chart, literally telling me like, hey, this is where you're at. Oh, I see that maybe the sprinklers are on at this time. And really like breaking it down and all it took was a little bit of patience, a little bit of asking the right questions. And when I hear people saying, you know, our customer service, you know, oh, the utilities department is this, utility, I'm like, I don't know if it's because she heard it's Naim and she, but the service that I got, I'm like, man, this, I feel so thankful to live in the community that we do and have the service that we have here. And someone willing on, by the way, was the week of moving. So she is moving to a new place at the same time, handling my concerns about my water bill. So thank you very much. Huge shout out to them, to, to our utilities department, Tammy running a great show and Terry for, for handling that, that call very well. I did want to remind everybody about, you know, we are a city of true believers here. True believers, we believe in Santa, we believe in Christmas. And, you know, the tree lighting event on December sixth out here in the city is a huge event, so I hope to see everybody out there. I also want to remind everybody to try to keep things local. You got, you know, the Christmas market, that's also taking place right before the, the tree lighting event. Newberry Main Street is holding their Christmas market, so you can get all your gifts and decorations. There's going to be music, food, gifts, and it starts around two o'clock and then the tree lighting's at six. But the market will go on till about eight-thirty. Also want to remind everybody that you can shop local. We have a really cool little boutique in, in, in-country way called the Yellow Acres Boutique. They have some.
Gift cards, too.
They have gift cards, they have really unique items. You know, I know you guys want to shop on Amazon, that's great. I still shop on Amazon, but you know, if you want to buy something a little different that you can't find on Amazon, just, you know, do the classic thing, stop in there or.
Jared will help you.
Huh?
Jared will help you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He will help you.
You got Shirt Shack, you got Shirt Shack, which is amazing. If you like meat and you like beef, you go to NC Cattle. I, A, I love gift cards.
I want to give them free right now.
Yeah, you got Bogo at NC Cattle, you can give people gift cards to some of the best meat around. And I also want to give a, a big welcome to Bravo Market. They've really done a phenomenal job. And, and I'm just going to lay this out here. Welcome to Newberry. I'm sorry that, you know, you got one or two people that like to be a little bit of the Debbie Downer because of they're scared of what's different. And that's okay. Let them be scared of what's different. We welcome you, the majority welcome you. I welcome you. When I went down to Miami and I told my family, yeah, Bravo, they're like, Bravo's in Newberry? It's like, yeah, bro, Bravo's in Newberry. They're like, finally, we can like, we can actually have like some like traditional Latin, like, you know, Noche Buena or Christmas Eve dinner. And, you know, people are excited about this, so I, I do want to share a big welcome to If you have an opportunity, we, we have a big enough community that we can support Bravo, we can support Public Shirt Shack, the Yellow Acres Boutique, NC Cattle. We have so many opportunities here, so I just wanted to share that. And, and a big shout out to North Leagues for handling the turkey and truck, and trucks event. That was a really cool, unique event. A lot of kids enjoyed that, being able to see those trucks and, and for a good cause, donating some turkeys and canned goods to those in need, so. Yeah, that's, that's really all I got. Sorry, I'm, I'm very well-winded, but it's the last meeting of the year. And, yeah, super excited to celebrate Christmas is the favorite time of the year for Newberry, so.
You know, I was just thinking, like, why was the Santa such a big deal and I remember now? Because when we first started the parade, when I first started that parade twenty-four years ago, we'd never had a parade, ever. I've never done a parade, ever. So there was no social media. Everybody called the city to complain. Every single person.
So is, is this the twenty-fifth anniversary?
Yeah, like, there was three Santas in the parade.
The twenty-fifth?
I'm not even saying like, the city of Newberry was gone through major, I mean, they, they're incredible.
Wait, wait, we need, we, any clarification? Is this the silver anniversary of the Christmas parade?
We honor twenty.
Or is it next year?
Twenty-fourth year.
Oh, twenty-fourth, okay, so you, you have a year, you're, because.
Perfect. No, you're perfect. You're a country.
Is that your fifth for you?
We're going to have so many.
It's the twenty-fifth anniversary of Christmas.
No, 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 no. Hun, hun, you are doing the twenty-fifth. This is the twenty-fifth.
So, yeah, I did.
She's done twenty-four, this is twenty-fifth. We, we might need to like step it up. This is the silver bells. Pressure, the pressure now is on, the twenty-fifth silver anniversary.
Okay, so everyone sign up.
They, they can't hear you.
They can't hear you.
Everyone sign up.
Hey, listen.
Get your floats, get your trucks.
And thank you for twenty-four years of doing that. Kudos to you for doing that.
Hey, I'm just saying, like, when you look at social media and you look at them, the forums, with that in perspective, that needs to come through one line of the city.
Yeah, now, yeah, now, now I have to admit that and watch all these people complain about, you know.
I'm so sorry. We had one year, there was a big thing about Jason Levy putting the sign down that said Xmas, December, whatever, on the ASO sign, because that's, you have to do that. So everybody was calling the city complaining because we took Christ out of Christmas. And I was like, oh, my gosh, there's not enough room on the sign, you know, it wasn't intentional. But that same year, the Merry Christmas came and they, they didn't say, they were coming, they just showed up and I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm going to get, this is, I'm going to have to move. Because I took Christ out of Christmas and now the Merry Christmas. Well, most people thought that they were saying Merry Christmas when they were going down the road, so that turned out.
Saying hurry.
There's been so many things.
Ms. Kathy, I'm going to.
The city of Newberry has had to be aware over the years that you guys have no idea because it's all.
Maybe we should bow our heads for Kathy also, in, in memory of the last twenty-four years.
And then she gave it to me.
Now you know why.
I knew. She gave it to you on the silver anniversary of Christmas.
Ms. Kathy, I will.
I did just like this.
In, in, in remembrance of the honorable Jason McGeehe that told me this, old commissioner friend, you can give everybody in the city of Newberry a brand-new crisp one-hundred-dollar bill in the mail with no strings attached. Hundred dollars, here you go, it's a hundred dollars, it's free, it's yours, and you will get people that will go on the forums and call the city and complain because it wasn't broken into twenty-dollar bills.
But those are the, the least amount of, the least amount of voices. We have more voices that are positive, but we just hear those loud.
Back to the positive, thank you, Terry, from your utilities department. Thank you.
See you, Newberry, for always putting up with all of us.
Yes.
Anything else?
Did I mention Terry from Utilities Department was amazing?
No, no, tell us, tell us about that.
Christmas spirit, bonus time.
Don't, don't, don't forget her manager, Marlowe, while you're doing your Thanksgiving extra gift cards.
Listen, if we're reiterating things we've already said, the Newberry High School Boys and Girls Varsity Lacrosse.
And it's not too late for. It's like, it's only seven twenty.
I have lots, I have lost control.
Did you say Newberry? Thank you so much.
I, I had a couple of things as well. So all of this resource information can be found on Alachua, Christmascapitalofalachuacounty.com. We have something every Saturday this month to celebrate the season. And all this kind of back and forth reminds us that our community runs on volunteerism. And, and the story, if it wasn't for the great work that our volunteers do, this community does not run. And I so thankful that people are willing to plug in and use their time and their talents to make our community great. I want to commend staff for the transition last week, moving over to the new building. If, if for some reason you were not aware, all the city businesses now in City Hall North or New City Hall, whatever you want to call it, the new building behind, behind here, all, everything is now co-located over there, so only, only need, you only need to go over there.
Where?
Over there.
There.
In the, in the new city hall, City Hall North.
It's yonder.
We'll, we'll, we'll come up, we'll come up with a, a description that sticks at some point. I am spearheading our city's celebration of America's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday next year. Our first big event will be a reenactment of the Lexington and Concord Battles, which will take place at some point in April.